Okay, um, let's call the meeting to order with a roll call, please.
John Mallers?
Here.
Ron Deere?
Here.
Jonathan Myers?
Here.
Melinda Griesmer?
Here.
Pam Burton?
Our president.
She may not have heard you.
Dick?
President.
There we go. He's running late. He'll be here in about 10 minutes.
Connor, can we get Pam up on the screen?
All right, I'd like to recognize Ron Deere for a moment of silence.
Well, not for me.
Not for Ron. I'm recognizing you.
This, uh, this past month, um, our community as a whole in Greenwood lost a fine public servant by the name of John Brinkman. Uh, John served on the Greenwood Fire Department for 30, 40 years in Myers Ambulance. Uh, he passed away and he also served on the Emergency Management Board. And I'd just like to recognize a moment of silence for John. Thank you.
Okay, Melinda, would you like to do the invocation?
Sure, absolutely, if everyone had bowed their heads. Heavenly Father, we ask for Thy blessing over this meeting, this evening. We ask for a blessing on those council members who are not here. That they might be found well, that they might find recovery. And that they would, they would be in Thy hands. We ask for a meeting, that this meeting would be productive. And according to Thy will, we ask for blessing on, on our law, law enforcement EMS and medical personnel in the hospitals. That they may have clear minds, energy, and the ability to serve the community and be kept safe. And we ask for Thy guiding hand in all things and blessings as Thou see as fit for us. And we ask for these things in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
All right, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up is approval of the agenda for today.
Oh, I will make that first motion.
Motion by Melinda Griesmer?
Second.
Second by John T. Any further discussion or anything? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is it a roll call vote?
Oh, that's right. Roll call, please.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
Jonathan Myers?
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
Pam Burton?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, sorry, I was, I don't know what I was waiting for. All right, uh, this is the public comment section, um, limited to five minutes per person. Is there anybody out there with any comments or anything? Appears there is none, so we will close the public comments section. All right, on to appointments, uh, appointments for the Johnson County Park Board. Are there any... People, appointees, I guess. Here to talk? All right.
My name's Sarah Rep Johnson. I had applied for the Johnson County Park Board as a Democrat. Um, I've lived in Greenwood, well, I grew up in Greenwood and I now live in White River Township for the past 11 years. And I'm excited for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
So is Penny Lee here or... There was one other. Andy Jackson? Nope.
Connor, is anybody online, maybe?
Penny Lee and Andy Jackson.
Hello, I'm... Okay. Hi, I'm Penny Lee.
Hello, Penny.
Hello, Penny.
Hello.
Can I tell us about yourself?
Sure, um, I am currently a grants coordinator for an online public school. But my first degree is in natural resources from the state, uh, public information education. Um, I also serve as, um, on the board of Friends of the White River in the past. And I'm a enthusiast of, of parks.
Me too.
That's right. Okay, so we've heard from two of the three and the third one is not available, is that correct? Andy Jackson, not online or anything? Oh, he's not eligible? Well, there's two.
You said also, so are both of these candidates eligible?
Okay, thank you. So I guess I'll open up the floor to discussion, nomination.
We have Parks Director President, do you have a comment?
Kevin Hunter, Parks Superintendent. Yeah, I think based off looking at the, both candidates and kind of what we have on the board currently, um, our recommendation would be to, um, appoint Penny Lee to the board. Um, I think the grants coordinator stuff, I think would be really beneficial. That's something we don't currently have on the board right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Your motion, just nominate one of them?
Yes, so given, and I want to state upfront here that we appreciate all applicants and hope that you not, you're not feeling badly about not being chosen and keep on seeking out these boardships.
Yes.
Oh.
There's always ways to serve.
Yes, and so I'd like to nominate Penny Lee, given the Parks Director's recommendation. And both candidates have outstanding resumes.
Absolutely.
And I would like to nominate Penny Lee for Parks Board.
So we have a nomination for Penny Lee. Do we have any other nominations or a second to this one?
Second.
Okay. John T. nominates Ron Deere seconds. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ron Deere?
Aye.
Jonathan Myers?
Aye.
Pam Olber.
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
John Dittmers, where do you think to go?
I am, I, that's who I selected in my notes from earlier, my earlier reviews, aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the consent agenda. Quite a few things on it. Items one through 22 under the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about any of them? It includes the meetings from the last, um, or the minutes, I'm sorry, from the last meeting and several grants that are being appropriated at this point. Anyone have any questions or anything on those?
Yes, I do.
Okay. By all means.
Oh, you ready for me?
These questions may have already been answered via the liaison, so it's, it's nothing. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
We hear you loud and clear.
Okay, item number six, Vasia. I couldn't find an explanation letter. I understand what the items are, what we're taking out of there. I just didn't find an explanation, and Amy may be able to answer this. I couldn't find anything to go with that. Why, why is that on here?
So do you want it pulled from the consent?
No, I don't know how it needs to be handled. I just have a couple of questions about it.
They're just trying to zero out that grant.
Clear out a grant?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought it was, but there was no explanation that I could find. So no, I really don't want any of them pulled. I just got a couple of minor questions that you guys might have the answers to. So the other one is, um, for number seven, for the drug court, adult drug court. I noticed that it's a new food line item and they're just, you know, it looks like moving money from travel and, travel and training. And, uh, I didn't find anything that said why we get, need a line item, what it was going to use for, or any information.
So Sheena's in the audience. Sheena, can you come into this?
Yeah, I'm here, but I don't know what it's for either. So it's, it's retro then? Well, we were taking food out of travel and training and it needs to kind of just be appropriated to a different.
Okay, all right, did everyone hear that? So we're ta- apparently we're taking food out of travel and training and it needs to be appropriated into a food line item which we didn't already have. So we're creating the line item and putting the money.
We're creating the line item and putting the money from travel and training into food. Yeah?
I understand the phys, I understand the physicalness of it.
I physically see what's going on.
My question is, food expenses for what is this line item just because somebody wanted it? What, why, why are we doing, why are we creating?
It was for a training, so as part of the BJA grant, we had to have people come in and train us from like the National Association, so they came in in end of November, I think. And, um, and we had to provide food for them, so that's part of it.
Is there any other trains you had to?
Graduations, okay. So we had some graduations, um, in drug court at the end of last year as well that we had to provide food for.
Okay, well, there was no explanation to that effect anywhere that I could see, so I wasn't sure what it was for. So maybe in the future we could get a little further explanation as to what it's being, you know, that stuff's being used for.
Yeah, of course.
Just as a reminder, when you're submitting these requests to the auditor, please have an explanation that describes it. Okay, anything else, Pam?
Yes, 14 through 18. It looks like it is all under the court for that 9171 grant from last year. And the amounts, some of these amounts on here are just really unusual. So that tells me there was a problem with the grant somewhere. But again, I didn't find any explanation anywhere as to why this had to be basically re-advertized and the work redone in '24 for a '23 grant. So I'm sure somebody's already talked about it, but that was my question.
I know the answer. Okay, um, my understanding is that the rollover letters didn't get completed in time for those grants. And that's why we're at council asking for them to be rolled over. So you know that if you complete the roller, the rollover letter by the end of the year, they can be rolled over. But those weren't completed in time, so we had to come to council. Does that sound right, Amy? She's nodding in agreement.
Yeah, I kind of thought that's what it was, but again, there really wasn't a lot of explanation. And I know that when the, the rollover letters aren't done on time, it creates a lot of additional work and advertisement. So I just wanted to make sure that's what it was.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody on the consent items? Nope. We have a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
Motion to approve the consent items as presented.
John T.?
Second.
Second by John Dittmers. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
Jonathan Myers?
Aye.
Pam Olber.
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
John Dittmers?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
He should have just stayed up here.
All right, uh, on to the individual items, salary, ordinance amendments and whatnot, additional appropriations, reductions and transfers. Number one, Superior Court, number three.
Sheena Johnson, Court Administrator. Um, I, I did provide an explanation on this one. I'm, uh, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Um, I think you can understand why we weren't able to predict what would happen at budget time for this particular item. Um, I can elaborate a little bit if you'd like, um, but just let me know, what, what questions do you have?
I don't, I think I understand the quandary.
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to put your thumb on some of these things as some of these things are coming down from on high, right?
Well, I mean, you think about it, our budgets are due July 21st. We had, um, two F1 jury trials and Superior three after that time. And two of the transcripts have already been requested, so you just don't know, you know, is the jury actually going to go? If the jury does go, are they going to be found guilty? If they're found guilty, are they going to appeal? And then, so all these dominos have to fall in order for us to get to this point, and we got to this point. So that's why we need more money.
So Sheena, does this, you anticipate this carrying you through the balance of the year?
That's what we're hoping, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a sense for, I know it's, it's, uh, hard to do, but from a budgeting standpoint, say as we go forward, how you might predict that?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I've had, I literally had an experience in the last two weeks where I went into, um, one of the court offices and they said, "Hey, did you know we have a jury next week?" And I said, "Oh, thanks for telling me." Went to talk to judge, three minutes later came out, jury's off. It changed that quickly. I literally found out about it and then three minutes later it was, it was a done deal. So, yeah, it's just, it's just hard to predict.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item D1, Superior Court, number three, oh one three four.
Do you have a second?
I will second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
Jonathan Myers?
Aye.
Pam Olber.
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
John Dittmers?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That was just number one, right?
Yep.
Okay, I know I made that mistake last time, I want to make sure I didn't over speak. Um, okay, so I, I looked at our appropriations, so we started with $13,000 for overtime for 2024. We robbed that $6,000 to pay for the transcript. Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I guess, which one are you talking about?
Number one B. I thought, I thought you just did the first one.
The one A, just did one A.
We just did one A, okay. That's my fault.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
That's what happened to me last time, I was making sure. So we had to transfer $6,000 out of the overtime to pay for the transcripts, some of the transcripts that we just talked about. Um, anticipating more, of course. Um, so asking for the additional appropriation to kind of replenish that line item. And then, like I said, we are, um, had to hire a new assistant court reporter. So they're anticipating some overtime might be needed to get her trained, so. That's what's going on with that one.
Any other questions?
No, since it was my mistake by not calling out A.
Oh, it's okay.
I'll call out B this time. Item D1B, motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
Jonathan Myers?
Aye.
Pam Olber.
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
John Dittmers?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number two, extension office, additional appropriation for interns.
Hi, my name's Heather Doherty. I'm the, can you understand me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm the county extension director and, uh, four age extension educator. Um, and we're, I'm asking for more money, um, to pay summer interns. I am new to this role, county extension director, and I was not part of the last budget cycle, putting it together. And I found a problem when I went to go hire interns this year, that there's not enough money to hire them, so.
And this is because none of them were earned eligible applicants?
Yes, so in the past, um, our summer interns, um, we do it through the Work Learn Program through Indiana, um, called the Earn Program. And it looks at the kids' families' FAFSA filing, and they've changed the FAFSA. So all of the applicants this year, they were all, um, their EFC, expected family income, was all too high for them to be earned eligible. So that just means that there's no matching dollars available for them. I can't say next year, you know, we may have four applicants that are earned eligible and so we may not use the money that is budgeted. But that's just, it's money back to the county budget general fund, I guess, if, um, that perk comes along.
Okay, just so I understand, you're saying that you, all the interns that you do bring on, they get a salary or hourly, or what is it?
Uh, they get, it's hour, hourly through the county. It's 950 an hour for 37.5 hours a week for 13 weeks.
Okay, but you're saying those people you bring on whose family income exceeds the standard?
For the Earn Program.
You don't have enough money for them, is that what you're saying?
So we're not, we're not the people that control the Earn Program. It's a totally separate entity. We just funnel it through our internship through the Earn Program to try to get matching dollars back when possible.
Okay, okay.
We're not the people in charge of it. So I can't say, oh, we'll just make them earn eligible. I can't do that.
Is the, the income level that you, the, what was the thing they were to? What was the disqualifying event was?
Uh, expected family contribution.
Is that the only, uh, criteria for being qualified?
No, there's other criteria, um, I think I put it in the, I thought I did. They have to go to, they have to be, be an Indiana student. They have to go to an Indiana university. But what's knocking most of the kids out is the FAFSA and the expected family income.
Okay.
So.
All righty.
And I do, I don't know how well you know about the summer internship program, but it is beneficial. I actually, we just hired our new A and R educator last week. Um, and she was my first summer intern when I started in four age. So it does have a little bit of an effect in the county because they're coming back wanting to work here.
So real, real quickly, Heather, so if the program applies, it's to the advantage of the county, but not necessarily is it a requirement or a criteria that you, that who you hire has to qualify?
Correct.
Is that?
Correct, yes.
And then it was a miss in the budgeting process because it sounds like the budgeting process considered it an exclusive to someone who does qualify.
Right, it would be like, in my opinion, it was bad budgeting tactics. And it would be like if I think, oh, I'm going to buy a lottery ticket at the gas station tonight and then go buy a million dollar house tomorrow, then I find out, oh, well, I didn't win the lottery.
So they just assumed that everybody would qualify? Did they normally always qualify?
No.
Oh.
Last year we had one qualify and one did not. And it's all based on that FAFSA.
Okay. And this 5,500 will be used for people this year?
Yes.
That are the interns?
Yeah, so I ran into this when I, so I did four, um, interviews this year. None of them are earned eligible. And then that's when I ran into the problem of, I don't even have enough right now to pay one of them in our budget at 950 an hour, because I think there's 3,900 in there right now. So I don't even have enough to pay one of them, and so they're sit, I've told them, they don't know if they're getting the internship or not because I've had to sit and wait, uh, for tonight to happen.
What is the cost per each?
Per each?
For, uh, the, what is the cost, 5,500, is that for the two or is it going to be 9,400 for the two?
So for the two, it should be roughly 4,631 and 25 cents.
Combined?
That's just for one and then two together.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
All righty.
So this 5,500 is in addition to what was already approved in the.
The 3,900 that's already there.
Correct.
And, and as a reminder, we've had, uh, she's a, a new director and was involved in the budget process.
Fair enough. Any other questions, comments? Pam, anything?
No, I'm good. I understand her explanation and she's trying, uh, not to discriminate, I believe, against who she hires based on whether they qualify for that program or not, and enough money just wasn't budgeted. It's what I, I'm seeing.
I remember being an intern doing it for free, so things have changed. Well, somewhere I worked for free.
You did it for a long time.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I've moved to approve, uh, D2, extension office, where all the numbers are for 5,500 dollars.
There's a second? Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
Jonathan Myers?
Aye.
Pam Olber.
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
John Dittmers?
Aye.
Melinda Griesmer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, number three, unified probation, another additional appropriation of specialization pay.
Hi, Angela Morris, um, Director of Court Services. Um, so our request for the specialization pay, um, we did at budget time, um, ask for specialization pay in our Community Corrections, um, in one of our Community Corrections funds. My original request for this one was to add to that, that we did at budget time. And then after talking to Amy, it was easier, she said, for the auditor's office if we put it in to the general fund where the salaries come out of. So, um, one, you can stop me if you want me to keep going, I can keep going if you want.
Easier, as opposed to what? Must have seen the confused look on my face. Easier as opposed to what's the alternative in the general?
We have to create any pay record and it affects our taxes and different things. We try not to create pay records, any additional ones that we don't have to, but also to be consistent with the other specialization fees. We raise the record to a budget and a voting, budget fund as the employee's salaries. So I was trying to be consistent with that as well.
So if I get this right, is it, it's, uh, it's a grant issue and it's a timing issue?
It's not a grant.
There's no grant issue.
Was this known at the time of the budgets last year?
No, I didn't know I needed these at the time of the budgets last year.
So is there a timing issue? Or is that from the last time? Because I'm reading an ex, explanation here, maybe I'm in the wrong place. No, okay, so I think, John, is that where I'm at, 6,000?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, yes, I got to the right place.
Okay.
Okay, this is the TBRI.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so, um, the, the original two specialization pays that she referenced were approved by you guys at budget time. I was asking for this one to be added into that. And at budget time last year, I, we didn't know we needed these.
And this is for how many, three employees?
Three employees, yes.
Yeah, it's a good program. I've been through some of this training and I'm a functional illiterate. So if you could help explain it a little bit, Angela.
Um, so TBRI is the Trust-Based Relational Intervention. It's the trauma-informed care that our system is moving forward with. We, the specialty pay, the practitioners, we're asking for these, um, three people to go through a four-month training. They will end up doing then system-wide trainings for court services. So they're probation officers now. Um, I compare it to what the sheriff's office has. So if you want to be on the SWAT team or the SCUBA team, you're a, you're a officer. That's your job title and job description. Those, the SWAT team or the SCUBA team is a specialty that you get trained for and then you do those separate in addition to your job. And that's what this is, so they're probation officers. And then in addition to that job duty and then. And then in addition to that job duty and those job requirements, they're gonna be a T B R I practitioner also. Um, so the main part is them training and teaching material and techniques to staff. So that's, um, and our new, over the last two years, the momentum has been in the adult system. I can, it's amazing, like, we are one of the first counties in the state to implement this trauma-informed care in our adult system. Um, which includes approximately eighty-five staff and two hun- two thousand plus offenders. Um, so it's important that we have these specialized practitioners. That are able to keep this momentum going that we've already established in the juvenile world. Um, our judges support this, three of our judges and two council members um have gone through this training. A two-day caregiver training. Um, and I think that's, they saw the value in it. Um. So, and the reason for the new practitioners is. We had um, two last year, and they both resigned and went somewhere else, they were therapists. And so that was their job, so they didn't have that specialization pay, cause that was their job and job duty in our system. We don't have that now, and so the probation officers are taking on this role, adding those duties on. And I, it was this fall when it happened, and so it was way past budget time.
Any further discussion, anybody?
Uh, yep.
Pam?
Um, I completely understand what Angela is saying. And I support her one hundred percent in this program and what is happening. But I'm gonna be totally honest, I'm very uncomfortable with these compensation changes this early in the year. I understand that the timing and people leaving. But unfortunately, that's gonna happen all over the county with this, with, with any specialization uh in a job. And I, I just feel that some responsibilities evolve naturally when a position or role develops. So uh, I don't disagree with anything, but uh, I, I personally, and I'm only one vote of seven, but uh. I just, I can't support this. I would suggest it be done at budget time, that's just my thoughts.
I have a, I have got a thought too, um. I kinda feel like um, it is ideal to do it all, all at budget time, but. When you're talking about the youth, and you got a very small opening in time in their life. Where you can make a big difference at a very monumental time in their life, that. I mean, it is our job to make exceptions, and this should never be the norm, and I don't foresee that it being that. But I think that's kinda why we're here, is to decide what is the exception and what can be delayed. And I think we oughta probably move forward with it.
I have an opinion, full disclosure, um.
Can I, could you move your microphone a little?
Yeah, can, can you hear me now, Ron?
Yeah.
Um, full disclosure, Angela and I had a conversation about this this afternoon, and I had a little different point of view. Uh, fully supportive of, of the program and what's done in these certifications and so forth. But like Pam, the crux of that conversation was um, timing and. It feels like we have reasons for going outside budget cycle consistently. And my thought was, because they get this certification and additional training. Uh, does that necessarily constitute the immediate need for a compensation change or an increase? That can't wait until we go back into um, uh, budget time. Um, typically in your job descriptions, there's other duties is assigned, and granted, they're more qualified, but this falls outside scopeness. Of maybe what the job description is, and it feels to me like this is probably better suited for um. Conversation at, at the appropriate time, and uh, I think that's, that's the budget time. But um, fully supportive of what's going on here and the request. I'm not, I'm not supportive request, request obviously of the rationale behind the request, I am.
So we will, um, just to kinda go along with what Melinda was saying, I mean, our kids are on probation for six months at a time. We only have people in work release, which we're now focusing on the adult system for, it's usually six months to a year, and so. Um, I can always come up with reasons to go outside of budget time. Um, it won't be this one again, but we just, we didn't know at the time, and so. And that's why I think it's, we're fortunate that council meets monthly to talk about things that come up in our departments. Cause that's what we rely on you guys, um, as the fiscal body to, and you've been very supportive, I'm not saying you haven't, but it's. That's one reason I like the monthly meetings is, and so we can bring things up like this to you guys.
So I, I'm in favor of the approval of the appropriation and for a couple of reasons. Um, and as, all that withstanding, I agree, and I see uh, John Dittner and Pamela Burton, I see both your points. And, and the need to tamp down uh, all these additional appropriations. But when we, when we look at a six thousand dollar transcript, that's an easy, that's an easy thing to do. It's a hard item, you know, it's like a book and. But the specialization pay, just the specialization pay with the uh quotation marks around it. Is not quite as firm and, and we need to consider that. But the reality of it is, what that is doing for our community is great, is far greater. And this six thousand dollars is, is gonna be somebody's life, uh, possibly. And uh, that's why I am in favor of it. Uh, given the fact that it is a budgetary item in some cases, but I don't think that it's, it's worth the wait in this case.
Will these services still be provided irrespective of whether this is approved?
Some will, yes, some we don't, we don't have some trainings without a practitioner doing them.
And, and they need to have this special, oh, and you won't have a practitioner without the specialization pay?
Correct, um, without the training.
Without the training?
Yeah.
Okay.
So said another way, will the training be done one way or the other, or is the training contingent upon these two thousand dollar? Per individual pay increase?
Um, we have found the money to do the trainings regardless, it's whether I'm gonna have staff that. Want to take on those extra responsibilities, I'd hope they would.
And the people that you lost were trained, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, that's another thing that I didn't mention or follow up on.
Any other discussions, any other questions?
So I'll make a motion, item D three, to approve the specialization pay, uh, O one three eight. In the amount of six thousand dollars.
And I'll make a second on that.
Motion second, any final discussions? Roll call, please.
I'm here.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Aye.
Campbell Burton.
No.
John Dittner.
Aye.
John Dittner.
Nay.
Melinda Griesmer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright. Next item up is number four, statewide nine one one, another additional appropriation for um, computer hardware and software.
Heath Brant, nine one one director. Just an additional appropriation to purchase uh, what's called a K V L, which is a key variable loader. Allows us to load encryption into our radio equipment we have at the, at the center. We've recently added some encryption for the uh, some of the field units. So just need to get that to be able to add that into our consoles.
So this is providing something that we didn't have before?
Correct.
So inc- when you say encryption, what is that, encrypting, what does it mean?
So it encrypts the radio talk group so that only people that have that key, that encryption key in their radio can hear the radio traffic. So you can't hear any radio traffic on any scanner or any app or anything like that. It secures the radio traffic.
I see.
Keith, is this new money? Is this, this isn't new money, is this grant money, is this something? Is this something that's been in the works, I, I just don't understand where it suddenly came from.
Uh, just the, the, we've decided just recently to um, move with an encryption uh project. So this is just one piece of equipment that we need uh to be able to, to do that. It, it came the, a lot of the law enforcement agencies came to us uh requesting that we um. Do some encryption in their radio for some of their operations that they, that they have. And um, which we've done that, just now we have to finish our side of it. So that back at our communication center, we can actually communicate with them uh if we need to.
And when you say we, you're referring to?
Our dispatchers, our staff there.
Okay, and, and the money, this one twenty-two, is it a current grant?
No, that's the twelve twenty-two, that's.
Right.
Statewide nine one one fund.
The statewide nine one one funding.
Okay, okay.
So, hold on, go ahead.
This is a new appropriation then, right, because this is, was not considered prior to. Since, since the budget was done, correct?
Yes, this was something that we, that we took on um, just towards the end of twenty twenty-three.
And you said this is part of a ongoing process, or not exactly the way you said it, but something along that line. Is there more to come to make this functional, or is this?
No, this is the last piece really to make it fully functional. Uh, we've, it's the, the sheriff's office and some of the other agencies have already been using encryption on their end. Um, just we don't have that communication with them if they're, if they're using it.
And Heath, I didn't see any, I didn't see any in-depth descriptions about any of this, did I just miss it?
I appreciate his descriptions and his discussion, and I was hoping that just as a suggestion that that be included. In the text of the uh, request next time, for everybody really. Had some, some of that this month.
Yeah, it's pretty general.
Yeah.
I have a curiosity, I don't, this has nothing really to do with what you're talking about, but I'm just thinking of it, and I'm curious. Can you, can people tap in and listen to your conversations, just like somebody of the general public tap in and listen to your radio communication?
Yes.
Okay.
There's different apps that you can get on your phone, a five oh app that you can listen to.
So this is.
Radio traffic.
This encryption is just for you guys to make sure you can't hear the outside noise, outside communication?
Well, it's, it's so that other people can't hear the traffic of the, of the officers and what they're talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a safety, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
And this is, this is where it's going, I mean, uh, you know, discussion has been going around and, and, you know. All across the state, encryption is a, is a big topic within public safety. And um, so this allows us to create our own encryption keys and control those keys. Um, and put them wherever we need to put them, it's, it's more secure than, than anything else.
And you said you can't talk with the sheriff's department without it?
That's correct.
Oh, wow.
And putting it into our, right now, we, we can if we, if we get one of our handheld radios that we have, but. Um, through our console equipment that we have, we, we do not have that communication when they're using those encrypted talk groups currently.
Yeah, this is a necessity in my mind, I, I'll make the first motion to approve this statewide nine one one. Uh, number one, two, 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 in the amount, I count A, I'm sorry, I count one, two, two, two. In the amount of six thousand three hundred eight forty-two cents.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm here.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Aye.
Campbell Burton.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
John Dittner.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
You certainly can.
Um, I think these are the kind of things we do um, in the interim on projects. The only thing I would suggest to um, department heads and others is um, maybe a heads up. Or in the planning process, if something can be forecasted as far as what needs to be done. Then at least a conversation about it, as opposed to, well, we're doing this so that we can now, in this case, now communicate appropriately with law enforcement or whoever. Um, and it feels like this is a key piece, Heath, your point, but um. No knowledge of something like this happening, I think is, it kinda um. I'm not gonna say blindside just, but it, it feels like it comes out of left field a little bit, and so to the extent we can. Uh, avoid that or minimize those kinds of things, I think uh, through just better communication. Um, it feels like that'd be appropriate and maybe doable. Um, and that's a practical change, I think, um, not suggesting anything was done wrong here at all, it wasn't. This is a practice that has become uh, maybe more acceptable, and if we can maybe get uh, a heads up on some of these things, it'd be helpful.
Would you like a discussion of their capital projects plans for next year during budget session?
Exactly, and, and some things you, you may, may not even be formulated yet, but at least something that might be on the. Horizon that may or may not come to fruition, and then at least, so as we, as we talked about back when. This is what we're talking about now, and that would be helpful, I think, for all concerned.
Yeah, that would be, my time on the White River Township Fire Department Board, they were very good at giving you. Heads up of what's coming down the road, so you're not just blindsided by that sort of thing, that's a great idea. Okay. Moving on, other business now, uh, approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash O two. Uh, amending the salary ordinance. What do we know about this?
So we broke out two and three, cause we weren't sure if the specialization pay that um, Angela Morris presented was going to be passed. So that's why there's two, instead of just one big one. Uh, number two deals just with grants that came in um, after the budget process. So it's really just to roll those salary ord- those salaries into the salary ordinance now that the grant life has started again. So that's what number two is for, number three is just adding the specialization pay to the exhibit C. That was voted on uh, under. D three, so they're essentially the same, we just weren't sure what the council was gonna do with specialization pay, so that's why there was two, instead of just one big one, so.
Okay.
And I think those ordinances Amy sent out on Friday, so that there's a couple of grants with WIC, community corrections. Um, I think there was a prosecutor grant for about ten thousand dollars as well, that's being rolled into uh, the salary ordinance.
Do you wanna take these individually?
I would.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, do we have any questions on the twenty twenty-four O two?
Uh, will you be reading it?
Yes, I'll read it from beginning to end. You had a chance to read it. Any questions, anything?
I did get the opportunity to re- to review the ordinance, so I'm good with it.
Okay, we have a motion to accept.
I'll make the first motion.
Second, okay. We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion on twenty twenty-four O two? Roll call, please.
I'm here.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Aye.
Campbell Burton.
Aye.
John Dittner.
Aye.
John Dittner.
Aye.
Melinda Griesmer.
Aye.
Alright, twenty twenty-four O three. Guess Adam kind of already went over it a little bit. It's dealing, it's more with the um, specialization pay?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're just rolling, we're essentially just amending exhibit C to roll the specialization pay that was already voted on. Under the actual exhibit that will be uploaded gateway, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion?
I mean, a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four O dash O three.
Second, second, John T. Any further discussion? If not?
If not, roll call, please.
I'm here.
Hi.
Jonathan Myers.
Hi.
Campbell Burton.
Well, Amy, I'm not sure how I'm supposed to vote here. I voted no on the actual pay, so should I vote? I mean, I'm good with the ordinance because we have to have it, so I guess aye.
You can vote your conscience.
Yeah.
With an explanation.
You said that, Adam?
That was me, yeah.
I don't see your name tag anywhere, Adam.
Tom Mallards.
Hi.
John Depperson.
Hi.
All righty. Onto old and new business. And we're gonna go a little out of order here. I want to start out with the discussion of the budget dates that were presented originally by Ron Dear. You all get a copy of those, you all have those? I think they were sent via email.
Go ahead, so can you just read them out so the public can know?
Yeah, I'll, I sent out a draft recommendation for improvements, potential improvements to the budget process, establishing specific action dates so that we won't be so crushed at budget time. The first one was May 13th. Our council meeting discussed and established specific expectations. And if more time is needed, suggest, you know, an earlier starting time. That is reflective of talking with Mike Reuter about when we might have a presentation and his initial, where he makes a draft recommendation on the budget. And he said he could do that on May 6th, the week before, which would allow a week for everybody to review that. And then on May 13th wouldn't be suggested date, obviously, as long as we to start and say, here's what we want to do with the budget this next year, how we're gonna go forward with it as far as recommendations of percentages or whatever that might be, which gives the department heads, the local elected officials time to establish their budget and have the budgets due to the auditor for first draft by June 13th, which gets the budget books to the council by July 26th, which is about a month earlier. Then I'm suggesting two council work sessions, two days. So just we complete that by August 23rd, which allows time for liaisons to meet with their individual departments. This is not an official presentation of the budget like occurs in September, but is giving us almost a whole six weeks before typical budget hearing dates, which Amy, you have rejection of when they might be this year. September 5th in that area or? I'm sorry? Okay, so the budget work sessions would, you know, be where we would hear presentations from the individual elected official and department heads about where we could have a length, not a lengthy discussion, a longer discussion. And then the official budget hearing dates. And like I said, I spoke with Mike Reuter and he said he could do it on May 6th and this is just a suggestion for us to improve the process. And I'd like for us to at least, I don't know that we have to make an official vote, but I'd like to have a consensus that this is something we could send out to everybody so they knew exactly what was going on. And any suggestions that, you know, just putting it on paper?
Comments, anybody?
The Department of Local Government and Finance has released their dates as well. I know some of y'all have seen the emails as well as me that are the dates that Mr. Dear has recommended do coincide and will work. So I personally don't have a problem with those dates or those suggestions and I think they're very doable.
Quick question. This is probably an obvious answer, I'm sure there is. The council work sessions consist of a lot, is that with the department heads as far as what their proposals are?
Yeah, it would mirror what we did, we do at budget time. But instead of forcing, you know, having that so intense at the budget hearings that the sessions would be available. And those who could make it would, those who can't wouldn't.
So is that in lieu of the first hearing or first pass?
Supplemental, prior to.
Prior to. Still have those.
You still have the first and then the second?
Right.
This is the first on a preliminary basis?
No, it's not first reading, it's-
It's not reading?
It's just a work session, which is established and Pam and I were talking at a recent meeting that this isn't uncommon for a lot of communities throughout the state of Indiana to do it. And it just makes it a more relaxed presentation and not so intense. So, you know, when they come back for first reading, it would be, here is what our budget as we're presenting it based upon what discussion. We wouldn't take any votes or anything. It would be, oh man, you're way off base or that sounds great.
Okay.
Mike Reuter, our financial director, or I'm sorry, our financial advisor, has suggested for several years that we put together, for lack of a better word, a finance committee going into budget. Therefore, a lot of the kinks can be worked out and the questions can be answered. So I think this is equivalent to what Ron is speaking of, whether we set it up. However, we choose to set it up, it's just, we'll get some, get in the weeds a little more prior to first reading.
Yeah, we get some more advanced time and, you know, can take reviews. And like I said, I don't think anything, I don't think what's voted in need. I just think a consensus that we do. And then Elizabeth, would you be able to distribute this to everybody that would need to know about it? So I would ask for a consensus that we-
I'd like to weigh-
What?
I'd like to weigh on a consensus because I think, I'd like to know more about what a workshop consists of. Is it the entire council or is it no more than three?
Rather than establishing a finance committee, I'm saying that this would be open and available and encouraged that all council members attend, but not a finance committee necessarily that, you know.
So we'd have to advertise?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
You would have to.
Right.
For the budget workshop.
If you're doing a workshop where there's the potential and high likelihood that there's gonna be four members meeting, it would need to be advertised as a public meeting.
Yes.
Why couldn't we have a workshop where it's less than four? And that way we wouldn't have to advertise. We could ask, maybe have the State Board of Accounts there. And I know, I know, John, you're more familiar with that than I do, but don't they put on workshops? So the State Board of Accounts could-
Yeah, but this workshop isn't relative to the State Board of Accounts. It's for us to hear what is being presented in the budgets. And the potential for everyone to be present, you know, if all seven might want to appear but a four appear, then we would have to advertise it anyway.
I, I think we have plenty of time to discuss later on how we want to set it up. I think just knowing that we all are in agreeance to have more time prior to that first reading. I don't agree with all seven of us. I think liaison and two people. But again, I don't think we need to make that, it's just my thoughts. I don't think we need to decide that tonight. I think just knowing that we do want to work on some form of either a committee or a here, whatever we want to call it. I think we can work the particulars out later. Because if it goes to a four-person meeting, you're right, that makes it a whole nother, a whole different level. So those are just my thoughts.
About we go with conceptually.
Yeah, and I-
And I want to thank you for what you've done.
Yeah, and personally, whether there's a committee or not, I'm gonna be present because I want to hear this information on an individual basis. You know, whether or not it's, you know, the whole council or not. I think it's something I want to hear and I would hope that everybody would want to hear what everybody's saying.
You said it's May 13th, what day of the week is that?
It's Monday.
Oh, Monday.
And then the May 6th is Monday also. John, and Mike said he could make it at 6 o'clock. And that particular item, we'd all need to be present because it's our normal.
Right.
It's giving advanced time before our budget discussions about how the budget should proceed. And I know there have been some, I've had some personal conversations with some council members about that.
Well, I think we ought to, if there's a way possible that we can move that May 6th meeting either to April or June?
No, Mike has to have time. In April, Mike doesn't have time to prepare it, but by May 6th he will have it prepared. June is after our discussion at the budget in May.
So all these dates are to accommodate Mike?
No.
In his schedule?
No, I'm getting, well, the May 6th, yes. May 13th is our normal budget here, our normal. And that's when we normally discuss, oh, we're gonna give a 5% or we're gonna do whatever. So this is giving, as we all want to request, or we always do, we want time. So May 6th is when he could do it. And have time to prepare.
So can, how do we go about, how do we move forward on this? Is it, can we just consent that we agree to it in principle?
Yeah, I mean, you could do that if you guys want a letter to be drafted just to go out with these dates. If you're good with the dates, you could take a vote on that and then we could work out the specifics when it comes to the workshops-
Right.
-next month or in between. But if the council is satisfied with the dates as presented, I would go on and just take a vote on that. And then you can have the auditors send out a letter to department heads and other elected officials that this is the anticipated, you know, budget schedule for 2024 with these kind of expected dates. And then, you know, if we need to have a carve, you know, carve out for any kind of potential for exceptions or anything like that, you can also do that as well. But if you're just looking for this specific dates, I-
And that's what I'm suggesting with one additional date that I wanted to open up for discussion that to put on here. If there was a request for a brand-new position, not an extension of adding a person to an existing position, but if someone's running to request a brand-new position, that we have time for a review of that position. And that should be relative to the council, I mean, to the budget presentation. So I'm suggesting that any new positions for 2025 also be part of this date, which, and I'm suggesting by May 13th. Which is not uncommon, again, throughout a number of counties and municipalities when they're talking about new positions. So you anticipate for 2025 that I'm gonna add a brand-new engineering position. Doesn't exist in the highway department. That they anticipate that request by May 13th.
What are you suggesting they do, just make that a part of their presentation or?
Document, write a new job description for a brand-new position, which I would, hopefully, there wouldn't be that many.
One thing, in case we haven't put two together, May 6th is the night before the primary. Do we want to lock in on the 13th date?
Oh, shoot, I forgot that. I mean, all work's done by May, I mean, I, I'm wanting, I'm trying to meet Mike's schedule. But he can't do it earlier than that because he has to put the information together. After that is our May 13th meeting where we typically discuss it. So I don't have a problem with being May 13th.
I thought Mike could be there at 4, could be here at 4:30 on the 13th.
But that doesn't give us any time to review his presentation before we talk about the budget. So it goes hand in hand. You know, we're always looking for information and we want, and we all complain we don't get information soon enough. And so in this particular case, because we're gonna be discussing it May, which is normal, unless that changes, we typically discuss in May what our directions are for the budget for them to be prepared. All right, and as of May 13th is that meeting, we couldn't-
Why don't we just go earlier on May 13th? Instead of starting at 6, instead, Mike can come in early and maybe start at 4, 4 o'clock. We can have all the discussion we want up until the 6 o'clock regular meeting. I know it's a longer meeting, but what other choice do you have because of Mike's schedule?
Well-
Well, Mike could also, real quick to interrupt, it's definitely a good idea. What if we had asked Mike to, in an email format, get it to you guys on the 6th? You have a week to review it and then we have a meeting at 4:30. And everybody can just review it, then you can ask questions.
That would work, I mean.
So you can do that.
Again, I'm trying to respond to the concern about not getting data. And if we're going to discuss what suggestions be made about the budget, whether it be salaries or our regular operational things, just getting it at 4:30 is not enough time to make a decision at 6.
I like Adam's comment.
If we have it for the week, then that would be good.
Yeah, so he could do it by email too.
Do we have, we need to vote on that then?
You might as well, you could just take a vote. If you guys are, if you approve these dates, then we just get a letter out.
To vote on then approving these dates-
As tentative.
As tentative for the budget process, with hopefully getting the information from Mr. Reuter on the 6th and then having potentially two meetings tentatively on the 13th of May.
No, earlier maybe, yes.
Do we, is the motion to accept that?
I'll make the first motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second my motion.
Sure idea.
Very good idea.
Any further discussion?
I don't think I want to vote for it.
No further discussion, we have the roll call, please.
I'm here.
Hi.
Jonathan Myers.
Hi.
Campbell Burton.
Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Thank you, Ron, for putting that together.
Yeah, no problem. I hope it'll improve the process.
All right, out of order again, we'll go number, well, actually, it isn't out of order. Number two would be discussion on the vendor for the job classification and salary studies. Currently, it's Wagner. The other option is NFP.
Tiffany, would you like to?
So you were given previously the NFP Compensation Benchmark and Strategy Services Agreement and then the Job Classification and Project Services Agreement that Ron Dear and I believe you guys, that John Depperson, John Mallards and Ron Dear, met with them to see, to get a bid or scope of services and engagement letter. So those are included. And then Adam and I reached out to WIZ at the suggestion of the previous meeting in January to get their timeline and their, look at a current engagement letter because the one previously that we were operating under was from 2022. So those are both present to see how you want to, to see what you want to go with. It's part of this process to attempt to streamline the budget procedures. They're kind of a little different each, so based on kind of what we've seen, there's a job classification through NFP. The Benchmark and Strategy Services Agreement is a little bit different than what we spoke to WIZ about and that was about job classifications if you need to as an ASHED basis. And the job, offer services job classification compensation is a way to, since we can't do a salary study, we're not, we're not able to do that with WIZ. They, the timeline has to be, we should, if you want to do a salary study, the last one we did is 2020, you have to get on their schedule prior to the year that you need it. So what we could do though, and we spoke to them about, based on what we saw with the job classification request, is that try to fit in a, some kind of, almost like a rubric for a policy of a range in salaries. And that way it compensates experience. And that way, it, it compensates experience and time and position, like a, a merit-based scale, while also allowing longevity pay. A lot of counties do this already. Johnson County just has like a blanket job description right now, how they, you know, as we did last budget, it was a blanket raise. But this would allow to compensate people based on how they are in that position, their time and position, while also, you know, if you want to hire somebody in who's maybe straight out of college versus someone who has had this job for several years, has more experience. So it's a way to give the council kind of guidance on that. And then you'd probably be able to speak to more of what NFP was.
NFP was, and it's something that I think we're going to have to look at in 2025 after talking to a few of you. For a hundred positions, it was seventy-five thousand. We have two hundred and eighty-six positions, I believe, is what I was told by Kirsten. So it would be three hundred, that, two hundred and seventy-five, three hundred thousand in 2025 for 2026. And John, you were around when the last one was done, is that right? In twenty, in twenty, you were, you weren't part of the committee, but?
I was not part of the committee.
Okay, so it's on the council. So I, it, it's something that we would, I mean, you know, it's a huge undertaking and takes time by any consultant. And WIZ would be a vendor for that also. So at this point in time, I don't think there's a recommendation that I'm suggesting as part of the personnel committee that we proceed with that kind of an analysis. But we be prepared that, you know, Madam President, and hopefully we'll put it in the, you know, the budget for consideration. And, and we have to get some numbers closer to what that might be, but it's no small undertaking. The first item, that's something that John and the three of us on the committee have talked about. The, the committee as it existed, talked about ranges when, you know, persons bought in, brought in. This is the more the kind of thing that WIZ is talking about doing for us. They would cost them, what, eighty-six hundred, I believe it was.
Yeah, and it would happen before, I'm sorry, I don't remember. But this would be done in time, we were given a range around July, and that would be able to be implemented in time to consider for budget. So that would be right around the time of this July twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
But why? I mean, we haven't, the whole council hasn't seen anything.
Well, you would at that point. It's just, it's a guide for you to see, like, how you would implement, like, ranges. Like, you, you know kind of what you want to pay at that point, but it's what's budgeted, and it would be a way for you to decide. It's not to tell you what the salary is, it's a way for you to make that range and decide on that range based on the position.
I have a question. Are, are we discussing at this point what vendor we're going to choose to use based on the information that's been provided to us? Not necessarily what they're going to supply or what we've talked to them about or what we might do in the future. Right now, it's on the board. Do we want to use, continue with WIZ or do we want to use the other consultant? Is that what, is that what we're discussing?
Yes.
Okay. My thoughts on that question is, just for me, I would prefer we stay with WIZ. It's been looked into and discussed that basically these consultants all do the same thing. Doing, they're familiar with Johnson County and what we do. And I think by reaching out to someone else and basically starting over, we're, we're reinventing the wheel on our process. So my choice on this one item would be to stay with WIZ. So that's, that's just my idea on that. Not what will, needs to be done, but on who we're going to use.
Right. So what are we using WIZ for? Is there a proposal out there?
I don't think, I don't think there is.
Oh, it, it was part of the email that got sent out. So there's, there's, the life of engagement will do things. It sets the, the fees for whenever the council decides to send a job description out for reclassification. So it governs that fee. Kind of when this was going on, we had in the back of our mind the potential of the personnel committee or council wants to have a, a small group meet with Wagner to discuss what policies, procedures the council wants to adopt. They meet with Wagner and then comes back to council to present any actual changes that the council wants to adopt as the policy moving forward.
But we can't, we can't sign the contract. Commissioners have to sign.
That's correct. So how?
This meeting should be with the commissioners, correct?
Well, I, what would happen here would be the council decides who they want to go with, and then the contracts then presented to the commissioners at their next meeting in two weeks.
We would just be making a recommendation.
Correct.
But can we see the information before we make a recommendation?
Do you have the email that was sent?
I have it.
They were sending an email.
Yeah.
What was sent in the email?
All of the engagement letters.
Yeah, there were four.
Did anybody else receive it?
Yep.
Thank you, yeah. So was there an RFP that was sent out to these two vendors to keep scope of work consistent or was it?
Well, I think the NFP came from Commissioner Deere's conversations with NFP directly. And then Wagner was based off just what we've been doing with them for however many years.
So it was not an RFP that went out that basically?
Public requests.
Yeah, remember, we had the meeting, you.
We did, but if we got, if, if the scope of work was not consistent as far as the work that was proposed and the fee schedule and so forth, then we got an apple and an egg that we're comparing as opposed to apples and apples. That's all I'm saying, and that's what I'm hearing.
They weren't part of the conversation of the NFP, so that, that very well could be a scenario.
No, let, let me clarify that, that the three of us, you know, were present. We had, you know, the, the meeting that you were on the phone. And that was to look at reclassifications of job descriptions. That was the sixty-six that were suggested need to be reclassified. That is, been narrowed to this suggestion of what Tiffany is talking about, where they are, they would be able to do a new position or a reclassification if it was felt it was necessary, but not all sixty-six reclassifications. The second part of it is that I, I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam and Tiffany, that because of the amount of like a potential three hundred thousand dollar, two thou, what we did in two thousand, that's going to have to go out for an RFP anyway, correct?
If it's, for professional services, it's not required to. It's helpful to get an RFP out because you get a competitive bidding and you can potentially get the lower amount. But on professional services.
Yeah, and there's no suggestion of moving forward on, on that tonight from myself for the presentation that Tiffany made. What Tiffany is talking about is the part we had discussion in the personnel committee of looking at a step program that John Mallers suggested and then longevity that came forward. And for them to review that, that's the eighty-six hundred dollar.
They, they being NFP or both of them?
I'm sorry?
Who's the they?
WIZ.
WIZ is doing that, and then NFP is doing the same thing. So we have a level playing field comparison or not?
I don't, we were like, I only, I wasn't, so I don't say, I don't know what you guys.
The, the we, the, it was simply for a reclassification when we thought we were going to be looking at sixty-six reclassifications.
And that's something different.
So my question is kind of coming from, it sounds like there was some level of dissatisfaction with the work that Wagner was doing. I don't know what that was. I don't even know if I'm right. If I'm wrong on that, please say so. In my experience, when you have a dissatisfaction with a vendor, more often than not, it's either expectations that aren't set or you're expecting something that was not communicated properly. And so that's where I'm kind of coming from on consistency as far as what the request is, as far as both vendors. So we again have a, almost a fair comparison between the two. But kind of Pam's point, if we can shore this thing up as far as what we need with an existing vendor, we don't have to start over. They've got experience with us now.
Yeah, right.
So that, that seems to weigh pretty heavily if we can.
And, and I don't disagree with that, John. The only reason we went with an outside vendor was that there had not been another vendor considered since two thousand. So I mean, it wasn't, you know, and that's, as a chairman, that's why I reached out to another vendor to see what else.
I agree with my wife.
And what we found out is on job description reclassifications, they were both in the same ballpark as far as cost.
And what we're looking for now for the services is discussion about longevity and what else?
Longevity, it could be a variety of things, but longevity, a tiered system when it comes to new hires with a certain amount of experience.
And so we would be pushing for a, a vendor and a contract for, I mean, do we need, we need to have those set out before we make a recommendation on who we pick, don't we?
Well, and then I, I'd like to interject a little bit. Commissioners are responsible for benefits.
Correct. This is not in HR. This is just.
I'm not talking about HR. And when, when we arrive at this decision, we can't. It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation of a vendor for the services.
And but we're telling the commissioners that we're making a recommendation, but we're interjecting ourselves into their decision-making process because they are responsible for benefits. We are not.
This has nothing to do with benefits. This is.
Well, it has everything to do with benefits. If you're talking about longevity, and I'm sorry, I'll, I'll just.
No, that's fine. I know that we're interjecting. I mean, I think we're providing a recommendation, but they don't have to, you don't have to follow it.
Okay.
And if, it was kind of a point for you guys to have something easily available during budget to set, when you do set salaries, when you do have these requests, you had, you know, everyone requesting, I want this position or this. It gives you a way to say, okay, this position should be here or here. It's strictly salary. It has nothing to do with, and it's just almost like charts to be able to use to help you during budget. And a lot of other counties do the same thing. It should have anything to do with benefits of the job. It's just strictly set, being, giving you a tool to set salaries easier.
So if we stay with, are we inside an arrangement or engagement with, with Wagner now?
We have an outdated engagement letter, so the other, the other part of this would be to get, just update our current engagement letter with Wagner moving forward, so.
If I could say something, want to?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't, we got a little relay here. I don't want to overtalk anybody. I want to do, to reference what Mr. Dittmer had spoke of. I have never gotten the opinion that anyone was ever unhappy with the services that WIZ had supplied in the past. I think at the time this discussion came about, it was just to check the waters and see if there was anything else out there available for some, that someone had to offer that maybe we weren't aware of, to take a reading, a temperature on, on what was going on with WIZ. And I think that their, their span of services that they're willing to do and offer for us now is not any different than they have been willing to do or offer in the years past. So I, I think by bringing another consultant in, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think this was just to say, hey, let's just double check this and make sure we, you know, there's nothing else out there we're missing. So, and as Mr. Myers said, no, we're not commissioners. No, we can't approve a contract. But it can go back to if it's not broken, you know, we don't need to fix it. So I, 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 I think we've gone down a rabbit hole now. I think we've, in my opinion, I think we're making it a little bigger than it needs to be. The sixty-six job descriptions that needed to be done or supposedly needed to be done, I think on, you know, on paper, I don't know that that's going to make a big difference on job classifications. And I think WIZ, knowing our county and knowing what we've done with them in the past, would be as or more qualified to sit down with any council member and do a thorough explanation. So that is where my support coming from WIZ is. So like Mr. Myers said, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I have a question for all of you and for all those sitting out in the audience, is why can't elected officials do the job description?
I think, I would think we totally could. I just think that, and I'm fine with doing it, but when are we going to do it?
Let me clarify. So everybody works underneath an elected official.
Right.
Not us. We work for the taxpayers and our constituents. But each elected official has a group of employees underneath them. Now, I understand that the sheriff's department is quite overwhelming. But the auditor's office, if you needed to write a job description, don't you think you could have a get together and write a job description? Is that impossible?
Yeah, this isn't suggesting that WIZ write a job description. That they're classifying a new, brand new job description. It's not their writing.
They're already, they're already written.
They're already written, but the department hasn't.
Was a small portion of I made, like, that was a small portion. The only thing that really was decided here is to give you an easier time during budget. So you're agreed to not, but the job.
Tiffany, is that, is that, is that a prospect that the elected official could write or they're?
Classify.
Couldn't write what?
The job description.
They are, they've already done it.
They are.
Yeah, they already did.
Yeah, they've already done it. Like, they're.
We have them.
Yeah, internally, department heads, elected officials are writing their job descriptions.
Right.
Wagner comes in and we're going to reclassify the job description.
For pay, classifying them according to pay.
Mostly you don't have to do that. They should.
Yeah, why?
But.
That's done at budget time.
Right, but she's saying if we hire them to do the classification, it's going to make the budget time easier to pass and move through. But I'm, I'm in agreement.
Not the way that I want to do it.
Department head should have that authority.
I want to give each elected official a percentage of raise to deal with in their department.
I agree.
And you're going to have to deal with those positions then.
I'm with you, John. I'm just explaining what I understand the situation to be.
But this is the quantity, and I, and I value that.
I personally don't like using taxpayer funds to pay for a consulting firm that doesn't even reside in Johnson County and.
But does anybody else see?
That's my issue. I want to keep the money here and let the, let the department, the elected officials decide.
Yeah, doesn't anybody else see the quandary here?
Yeah, yeah.
That we should not as a body be deciding these things.
Agreed, yeah.
As seven people. It should be the department head, the elected officials under, the, the department head's under an elected official. So there's like eighteen elected officials. And then of the three, you know, commissioners, they've got several departments underneath them. But all of these employees serve at the, at the pleasure of the elected official.
Right.
So the elected officials should be charged with this. I'm sad that we can't have a collaborative effort and, you know, do something, you know, countywide, but that's apparently not going to happen. But given that, at budget time, what I would like to see happen is X percent given to the elected official. And then they deal with it within their department.
So you, you, unifying, I think they were, I think you're trying to say is they're just trying to unify the county. So it's done the same between departments, but it doesn't have to be.
Back to the issue of the vendor. It sounds like we don't have any consensus at all on this.
We, we have, just to comment on what Mr. Myers said, Johnson County has job descriptions. Those job descriptions have been put together by elected officials. They are done, what, every two, every four years? I think, I, I think there's books in the back that has job descriptions that go back fifteen, twenty years. And those initially start with the directors and the leaders of each department. So what you're saying is true, John. The elected officials do write the job descriptions and then they are put together by the jobs that are performed. But then they are classified by one, by the consultant as to whether they're a comot or, or whatever the classification is. The only job description that would need to be done new would be for a new position, which would be put together by the director or the elected official and then would be submitted to the consultant for classification. So they, they are, to the best of my knowledge, for the most part, initially put together. the consultant for classification. So they, they are, to the best of my knowledge, for the most part, initially put together by the elected officials and the directors.
And that's the, since I've wanted, you know, brought up this up as a committee chair, that, that is exactly the classic, uh, the explanation that I'm putting forward for a new, for a brand-new job, net, brand-new job position descriptions. It is written by the department head or an elected official.
So for that job, that effort described by Pam and for discussion about longevity and maybe some other issues, we have Wagner or we have NFP?
Whenever you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to make one.
Can we move on one of those vendors? We have a motion to choose one of those vendors for this service.
Are you ready for a motion, sir?
I, can I, I just want my comment here. I don't really have a preference in the vendor. I, I wish there was a vendor within Johnson County we could use.
And Melinda, we could discuss that all night. There's so, there's so many reasons and, you know, thirty years past experience working with them, you know, not qualified, vendors not qualified in our county, that, that's just a whole nother conversation. But for now, if you're ready for a motion, I would like to make the motion. We continue with our span of work with WIS as we've done in the past.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Good. Um, so, uh, roll call, please. All right.
John, John Mallon Myers?
No.
How about, table over. Table over.
Aye.
John Mallon.
Aye.
Our network.
Aye.
I'll go along with it. Aye. I'm sorry. I just.
All right. And lastly, um, the issue of the personnel committee itself. The old one is gone. It is, it is, its time has passed. Its charter has ended, however you want to call it. Very briefly, brief discussions, one and all, um, about the, um, what to do if we have one, if we don't have one, sort of thing.
As former chair of the committee, I'm going to defer to John Dittmer's who has, uh, has some thoughts about that. I would just lead it off with, uh, I think there is a, a need for a personnel committee. I think perhaps it needs to be reformatted and its focus be more directed. So, John.
Yeah, I'm thinking about what we talked about the other day, Ron. So give me a second. Um, first of all, I think something needs to be done. It's how do we do it? And Ronnie, you just said the, um, key word with this past committee, uh, I, I think this is where you're going with this. I had a few thoughts on that. We had every good intention that, uh, really did not work out very well. And in my mind, the reason it didn't work out very well, and I'd love to rewind on it because I like to have known then what I know now or thought then what I think now. I don't think our outcome or our objective was clearly defined as to what we wanted at the end of the effort, if you will. And so we were kind of, uh, we did a lot of talking. We did a lot of meeting. We did a lot of different things without, um, a real definition as to what our objective was. And anytime you do that, you do a lot of meeting, you do a lot of talking, you spend a lot of time and you really don't get where you're going. In fact, you spend a lot of time with, and people lose interest in what the, um, what they set out to do in the first place. So my thought was, is we kind of take a breather on this thing. I think the, I think the initiative is still, um, one that we need to pursue. I think we need to take a little bit of a breather here and think about how best to do that. And maybe it's how the, what the composition of the committee is. Maybe it's fewer people. Maybe it's more people. I doubt that because I don't like more people. But nevertheless, it's about what I like. It's about what we need to do. But the point is, I think we need to get a group together that understands the objective and a group that is, um, committed to getting there as opposed to this thing moving around with a lot of opinions with no traction. And so that's, that's where I think, Ron, you and I talked about it, and I think it was every good intention that, that, um, for maybe a variety of reasons, some justified, some not, that, um, we just didn't get where we were going. So I do think we need to start over, but maybe think about how we want to start over in a little different way. That's what I think we talked about.
And John, you served on the committee, so you're coming.
I, I feel the same way as John Dittmer's. Um, it just, it lost its focus. I don't know that everyone was growing in the same direction, but that's, I mean, there's no point in worrying about that now. We need to figure out what we want to do, if we want to do one going forward. It's been suggested that we have three council members and, and the purpose of it would be to meet with Wagner or WIS and, um, discuss the issues that were, that we know we want to discuss, which would be, what, some of the job descriptions to whatever classification it is, little, uh, discussion of longevity and potentially salary ranges. And just, just keep it at that. That's what we want to talk about. That's what we want to address. At least initially, we can form something to do that. I would be fine with that. Anything else, I, I don't think is necessary. But if we're going to do that and have a group that goes and handles that and then they bring that back to the council for the council to deliberate on, I think that would be worthwhile. Anything else, more people, a larger scope, no.
And, and my comment on it is I, I, I agree with what has been suggested there. Uh, and one of the things that would be part of that discussion is this five-year, that we haven't done in five years, the big project, the potential project of well over two hundred thousand dollars that I've, based on the knowledge that I have, and Amy, I know it's an off-the-moment thing, but when we did this five years ago, was, it was a major amount, as you recall. Well over two hundred thousand.
I don't remember. Is that what the commissioners?
No. So the commissioners paid for it five years ago and we're going to have to pay for it, uh, you know, going forward. To not lose traction, uh, my suggestion would be that the three council members that were on it were, uh, all had the ons on the last part of their name, John, John, and Ron. That, you know, if we're going to go forward with this committee to, to continue, uh, that I would hope that we would appoint the three of us. But I think we need to, to start that because we're going to have to look at this twenty-twenty-five budget, uh, and what exactly we want from that, uh, salary review. And I think there may be some lack of knowledge, for lack of a better word, about what we're talking about when we're in the salary review, but there was a major and two thousand, uh, twen- in twenty-twenty, there was a major, uh, salary review that looked at, uh, salaries throughout the region. Uh, going back to what we did about the five above and five below and, and there was some, uh, I know there was some discussion we had in the last three years about who we used as, who we're comparing ourselves to. And so if we, do we compare ourselves on a salary study to, you know, a, a population of seven hundred thousand as opposed to a hundred and fifty thousand? So, uh, that would be part of that focus that we're talking about.
I think that could be. I think that would be, I don't know if that's as pressing as these other issues, but I think that's something we could do. I also kind of agree with John. I don't know if, if this is specifically something you think of with, you say, the elected officials, we can do that here. I think we could do that. We could come up with the salary amounts. I mean, as opposed to having them do a whole new salary study. I think that's something that we could do. But.
Well, and if we could, then, you know, that's great. Uh, and if we do Kirsten to do that, and, you know, it would have to be more directed and more specific and give her specific directions.
But I would, I would say that if we're going to do something, we have it more focused to just these issues and that's something that we can address. I think if these things get resolved down the road.
So, you know, the, the point is, is when do we suggest establishing it?
Well, my suggestion is, and the four words I heard from John Dittmer is we need to take a breather. Is that five?
No, it's been, go ahead, Pam. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Again, we're overlapping. There's just one other thing I wanted to insert into the conversation, which, uh, him mentioning, mentioning Kirsten's name. I need to say this politically correct, but, um, I've been talking to Elizabeth Alvey, our auditor, and that office has been over backwards and provided us with, with everything that we need. A lot of the information has been redundant. A lot of the information has just been, uh, re-indexing it, rehashing it. They're always willing to help us, but I think, I think we're, I think we're outwearing our welcome. I think we need to stick with, uh, the minimum on what the secretary is required to do and what they are required to do for the council. And I think that any suggestions moving forward on additional information on job studies or pay increases or, or anything of that sort needs to go directly through the auditor for her approval and dispersment. Um, just my thought.
Okay.
Real quickly, I knew we could move on, but, um, Ron has reminded me of something else. I, I think I, uh, mentioned, I, I think we've got a, a short-term improvement we can make and then we've got a longer-term improvement that we can make, and maybe more in the form of a project that, um, we might shoot for a twenty-six target, budgeting target or something like that. You know, you think about this, the twenty-five budget, we're a pretty compressed period of time right now to do anything major. So I think what we need to do is think more in terms of where you want to go with this, and I'm more inclined to get it right than I am to get it fast. And if we kick in those terms, then I think we need to talk about those kinds of things rather than creating emergencies and, and, you know, fire, the proverbial fire drills for ourselves.
Yeah, and, 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 and that is, it is accurate. And simply saying, you know, to kick this can down the road, we can do that as far as when we establish the committee, but I think it needs to be established.
Yeah, we want to kick the can down the road without an end purpose that we're shooting to wind up where the can should be.
And I think some valuable, valuable input should come from the elected officials and, and the, especially the commissioners, since they have a, you know, they have a statutory requirement, as do we.
Yeah, John, I agree with that because I think rather than tell them what they want, we need to tell them what they need. Said another way, so.
So is, is there a desire to reestablish the committee?
With specific goals.
With specific goals and limited people. All three people. I guess what was described, describe, we'll just go with that. Uh, three people on the council. Uh, personnel committee just to discuss very, uh, limited issues, the job descriptions and the job classifications, longevity, that sort of thing.
Maybe come up with a couple plans, present those two plans to the council and pick one. Some, I mean, you're not going to, this isn't.
Well, I mean, they would meet with Wagner and, and part would be to meet with Wagner and get some of these, get some suggestions and, and like you mentioned, they'd come from Wagner, presumably, and, and then present that to the, to the council.
So the committee was originally, uh, by council and by the president. And we've yet to hear from our president as to, you know, how this ad hoc committee would go forward. And it would be an ad hoc committee and it would only be good for a term of six months and.
Well, I, I don't know why that has to be. I mean, that.
Because this one is done.
Yeah, but it doesn't have to be for the future. It could be a standing committee.
Well, regardless of how it's constituted.
It's not in our, our, our rules as a council. Our rules as a council states that an ad hoc committee can't last and we cannot have a standing committee.
Right, you guys passed that. You passed it. Ad, ad hoc is six months. And that's what we got. We're going by the rules now, so.
Oh, but it can always be re-instituted after six months, so.
That's true.
It can be perpetual. So did you have any comments, Pam?
Um, I'm purposely trying to stay out of this conversation because I have a completely different, different view on what should happen to this committee. But I did talk to Adam on my responsibilities as president. And my responsibilities, and Adam, you correct me if I'm wrong, is not to make this determination and appoint people and be the person in charge of it. It is just to keep the meeting in order and that it is, the, the legality of it is followed. So Adam, if you could touch on that a little bit, because I personally, uh, I'm, I'm great with what I've heard here. I would like to hear more from Mr. Myers because I know that he has a, a differing opinion, I believe. But, uh, I am perfectly good with moving forward in the future with a limit, a very limited scope, uh, a longer timeframe and a breather from the committee at this point. I find the term kicking some, kicking the can down the road a little bit offensive because I think everybody on this council has done everything but try to kick this can down the road. I, I, I think if, what Mr. Dittmer said, if we could put some of this toothpaste back in the tube and start over would be great. But, uh, I would really like to hear some suggestions. Is this something you guys want to do now? You want to re-establish this committee now? You want to wait and shoot for the twenty-twenty-six budget? You want to wait until we have meetings with WIS? There's just lots of unanswered questions. So I am not against it. Uh, I do not want to move forward with a knee-jerk reaction, thinking that it's something we can use at budget time this year for twenty-five. I don't think that's possible.
Are we trying to cram too much in a short amount of time, perhaps? I mean, we're trying to make the budget system more smooth. That perhaps.
I've seen, Melinda, I've seen it change with every council for years.
Yeah.
Every council wants to do better and I understand that. Everybody wants to do better and do what's right. So, you know, this, this is not the first time these discussions have been had.
So just real quick, since Councilwoman Burton mentioned me, so she and I did have a conversation about what her responsibilities present would be when it comes to ad hoc committees. Per the council's own rules, just the council may, if consensus exists, create these committees, right? It probably would be maybe appropriate, if there is consensus at this moment to move forward, what probably should happen is at the next month, one of the council members who wants to promote the idea of the committee, um, follow the rules on the three-point-two B and just follow B-one, two, three, and four, which outlines a number of members on the committee, the specific topics or subjects the committee is going to consider and evaluate, the length of time, presumably be six months, maybe three months. And then mention when any report or final presentations the committee will cur- will, if there are any, will be then presented to the council. So if, what I'm hearing, it just sounds like to me is that there is a consensus to potentially have this committee, but to follow the rules, probably whomever wants to present the idea of the personnel committee should create those limitations on the narrow scope and then present this at the March meeting, lay out the groundwork. And that way it's, it's done by council. So if Councilman Lawler wants to present and then no one buys in, well, then it doesn't go anywhere. But it doesn't have to come directly from the president. Whomever's going to present can lay out members, time, duration, scope, et cetera. Then the council is all the body then vote here, right, or abstain.
So it's appropriate to table this pending that work and revisit in March?
I think so. And I think I, I was under the impression tonight was really to get the consensus most likely. And if there is, if something there is, then move this forward in March to set up that narrow scope.
And it doesn't have to be from one, I mean, the, the three of us that served on the committee before could put together a suggestion, if you will.
That's fine.
So I moved to table the discussion, given all the, the descriptions that you had there.
And I want to apologize for saying kick, kick the can down the road. What I was pointing out is that we don't have to wait till twenty-twenty-six to establish the committee. We could establish the committee in the near future to discuss the future of, uh, this as it goes forward.
So we have a, a motion and second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
John here.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
Table over.
Aye.
John Mallon.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Do we have to roll call for that, too?
Just get up and leave.
Thanks, man.
You're welcome. I have eighteen teenagers on a ski slope. They're all outside in the hallway waiting to get in this room.
See you, man.
Goodbye.